I could please have quiet in the chambers. We end at this point, let me recognize Councilmember Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, everybody. Buenos dias. I'm proud to stand here before you on behalf of our colleagues, Councilmember Perry and Villagosa, to welcome the Ecuadorian city of Ambato, the city of Ambato from Ecuador. Each year we celebrate the Fiesta de Patrias of the many nations that make up Los Angeles. Including those celebrations is the celebration of the Fiesta de Patrias for the country of Ecuador. We did it last year during the month of August, and we plan to do it again this year. Well, today it gives me great pleasure to welcome some of our counterparts from the city of Ambato, Ecuador, and their council members. And it's important that we understand this relationship, because as you know, this great city has a representation of many countries throughout the world. So we have this umbilical cord that nourishes our communities through our language, through our culture, through our food, our customs. It's reinforced every year when we have our dignitaries from other cities, the mayors, the council members, as they come and visit the city of Los Angeles. With us today, we have Fernando Callejas, mayor. We have Luis Morales Solis, vice mayor, and Paulo Guerrero, the executive director. I'd like to take a moment, and councilmembers Fernando Melendez, Araceli Bukeli, and Mauricio Tacuaman. So I'd like to take this moment to present this certificate to our concejal de Ambato, Fernando Melendez. I'll be asking them to share a few words after we provide the certificates. We also have with us, for our councilman, Araceli Bukeli. Bienvenidos. And Mauricio Tacuaman. I'd like to invite them to the microphone to share a few words.
Buenos dias, señor alcalde de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, y señores concejales de la misma ciudad.
Good morning, councilmen in the city of Los Angeles.
Estamos presentes, los señores concejales de la ciudad de Ambato, Ecuador.
We represent the council people of Ambato, Ecuador.
Para presentarles nuestro fervoroso saludo, a la vez que agradecerles por esta oportunidad de recibirnos en el municipio de Los Ángeles.
We are grateful to receive us and to say welcome to the city of Los Angeles.
Y decirles que nos aliamos muy contentos de estar en esta bella ciudad.
To tell you that I'm very happy to be in this beautiful city.
Y de compartir con todos los ciudadanos que en ella radican, especialmente con los ciudadanos que son de nuestra procedencia, los latinos.
And to share with you all the citizens, especially the citizens that are from our precedents, the Latinos.
Queremos invitarles a que participen con nosotros, con los ambateños, en la próxima Fiesta de la fruta y de las flores.
We want to invite you with the Abateños to the next Fiesta of the flowers and the flowers.
La mayor fiesta que se realiza en el Ecuador.
The biggest fiesta that is celebrated in Ecuador.
Y queremos que vengan el señor alcalde o su representante y los señores concejales para que participen con el pueblo de Ambato a partir del 17 de febrero de este año.
We want to invite the council people, the president, to come and join us on the 17th of this year.
Y finalmente señalarles de que queremos, aparte de firmar un documento, para hermanar a la ciudad de Ambato con la ciudad de Los Ángeles, queremos ver la posibilidad de compartir experiencias de carácter municipal entre esta ciudad y nuestra ciudad de Ambato.
And we also want to share besides signing a paper to invite you about the sisterhood of Ambato City and this city.
Lo dejamos no solamente nuestro saludo, sino que lo dejamos también nuestro corazón. Viva Ambato y viva Los Ángeles.
We leave you our hellos and our heart, and viva Ambato and viva Los Angeles.
Thank you, thank you, councilmembers, and welcome to our city. Ms. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. We also have with us, as part of the visiting group, Santiago Suarez, he is an artist, prestigious artist from Ecuador, the city of Ambato. Mr. Suarez, we'd like to grant this certificate to you, and thank you for joining our city this morning. Well, folks, thank you very much for this time. Just by sheer coincidence, as a footnote, today I have two students from one of our local schools that want to interview a council office and talk about the business of this work that we do. It just so happens that the parents come from the very same city of Ambato, Ecuador, and the children, grandparents are from this city, so what are the odds of that happening in this great city to have that kind of connection? It's all sheer coincidence. It just shows us how small this world really is. Again, thank you very much.
Again, thank you, Mr. Reyes, and thank you, councilmembers.
There's one more element here. We'd like to present a...
Al nombre de los residentes ecuatorianos en el exterior, me voy a permitir condecorar al concejal Ed Reyes, para decirle que a través de esta condecoración está el sentir de los residentes ecuatorianos en Los Ángeles, y decirle también que junto con nuestro amigo concejal Villarrealgoza, sigan luchando por lo mejor que tiene el ser humano, para que su dignidad y los derechos humanos prevalezcan aquí, en este grande país como es Estados Unidos y en todo el mundo. Que su lucha la admiramos desde el Ecuador a Villarrealgoza y a Ed Reyes.
Muchas gracias, su honor, para estar reconocido con mis colegas, concejal Villagosa y Jan Perry, que también estaba apoyando este esfuerzo. I just want to give thanks for this honor on behalf of Councilmember Villagosa and Councilmember Perry, who jointly together are sponsoring this. And again, thank you, councilmembers, for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Reyes. Mr. Clerk, let's call the roll.
Cardinals Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ledlo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villagosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, ten members present and a quorum, Madam President.
All right, let's suspend the resolutions at this moment. We have two more, but let's go through the agenda and approve those items and call special. What is out there?
First item would be approval in minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, Mr. Smith seconds. The minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are approved.
Since there is a quorum of the council, do you wish to take public comments at this time?
There are no public comment cards submitted, so I will open the public comment period and close the public comment period. Gone with the items.
On the regular agenda, item one is an item notice for public hearing. This is a public convenience or necessity item in Council District Two. A motion is required.
There are no cards submitted, so let me ask Councilmember Grul if there's a motion on item two. Ms. Grul? Councilwoman Grul, item one is the convenience and necessity item? You want to make a motion?
Move approval of that item.
All right, we have a motion before us on item number one. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Villagosa, did you have a...
Yes, I wanted to identify item six as special.
All right, well, let's call those items, Mr. Clerk.
Items two through eight are items for which public hearings have been held. There are two reports on one file for item eight. Council may adopt both.
All right, Mr. Villagosa calls six special. Members, Mr. Weiss?
Looking for the number. It's the UASI grant. I think that might be seven.
Mr. Weiss?
Seven, please, special.
Mr. Weiss would like to call item seven special. And item eight, we can adopt the motion, a motion for both reports. Mr. Labange? Mr. Labange?
Yeah, number three and four, please. Number four, continue to Wednesday, please, and number three, special.
All right, Mr. Labange calls item three special. And is there any objection to continuing item four until Wednesday? Seeing none, we will have that motion. The remainder items on the desk, two, five, and adoption of eight. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Items nine through 21 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, there are no cards submitted on nine through 21, so the public hearing is open and closed. Any specials members, nine through 21? Seeing none? Open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Let's now go back to the presentations and let me recognize... I'm sorry, I'm sorry, member.
On the continuation agenda, item 22 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, anyone want to call items, item 22, special? Seeing none, we have item 22 before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that is approved.
And that being an ordinance that will go over for one week to February 6.
That will be the order. Now let me recognize Councilmember Zine for his presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'm pleased to recognize two of the schools in my district this morning, and the first school will be Woodlake Elementary School. If the students can please come forward. We are very pleased today to receive Woodlake Elementary School and the TARA program. Don Coombs is the founder of that program. TARA represents traffic awareness, really achieve safety. And the purpose of the TARA program in traffic safety is to establish a safe surrounding in the vicinity of the school involving parents and students. And this is accomplished with the fifth grade students who work side by side with the adult coordinators. They're involved in the community. This helps the self-esteem of the students and makes a difference in the community. They are all good citizens and good students. In order to participate, they have to submit an essay entitled, "Why I Want to Be a Member of TARA's Committee." In 2003, over $500 in scholarships were given out to students that entered the essay contests on how they would make a difference. This year's committee, class of 2004 with 59 students, fifth grade traffic crusade was the largest and best ever. A terrorist committee held a traffic safety poster contest in which there were over 100 entries that were posted on the school fence for drivers to observe. And I personally witnessed that this year, along with last year, and it's a wonderful turnout from the students, wonderful participation, and a great traffic safety awareness for the parents that transport and commute in that area in the vicinity of Woodlake Elementary School. Fifth grade teachers, Mrs. Loretta, Mrs. Caprieta, Mr. Kim, Mrs. Feirstein, those are the teachers from the fifth grade, and I think a couple of them are with us this morning, along with some of the sponsors. And I have two presentations. Well, actually, each of the students will receive an appreciation with their name, recognizing their contributions to this program, so each of you will receive one of this, because we have one for each event, each and every one of you. Where's William Dawson? William Dawson? He's not here? Give me the one that the student's not here. Well, we've got him for each and every one of you. And we also have one for you, Don, if you'll come forward, please. Don Coombs, Woodlake Avenue Elementary School, Terrorist Program. She's the founder of this, and this is in recognition of your efforts to promote traffic safety in the community for Don Coombs. Don, thank you for what you've done. I know that you're very committed to this. You brought this program together for Woodlake, and it's been a wonderful program. And the students are not only going to enjoy a day away from school today, but you're going to get a tour of City Hall, you're going to get lunch at City Hall. I know it was a fun bus ride down here, so you're going to enjoy City Hall in action today, all the way from the tower up at the top to the chambers that we are today. And keep up the good work, keep up the good citizenship. We all recognize, we appreciate that, and the wonderful posters. And Don, thank you for all you've done to make this come together. And if you want to say a few words?
Madam President and Councilwoman Dennis Zine, thank you very much for recognizing this program one more year. This is our seventh, unfortunately, last year of doing the TARA's program. And I am eternally grateful to the children's participation and for the city of Los Angeles for allowing me to be of service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And students, we're going to take you right off. And I have one more. You're very welcome. You're welcome. We'll do, we'll get back there, we'll do all the photos together. You made some big posters there, partner. All right. You can smile, it's okay. You can smile. And we're now going to be joined by Welby Way Elementary School. Welby Way.
And good morning, Welby Way. I like their t-shirts, Mr. Zine.
Well, they came up with this idea, called the Z Team, and this was, I was surprised when I saw it, but they've done a great job with it. I do appreciate it. If you turn around, we've got Welby Way Traffic Safety, and on the front of the team, they've got the Z Team. So these are all members of the Z Team Welby Way, which I walk by many times when I'm doing my exercise in the community. Welby Way Elementary School Traffic Safety Program, Karen Perry, parent and teacher. Karen? Come on up, come on up here, come on up here. We're going to have presentations for all the students, and a special one for you, the teacher, traffic coordinator, in recognition of your efforts to promote traffic safety in the community. That's for you. And I'm going to give a few more comments here about the Traffic Safety Welby Way School. Been a problem for many years, a traffic problem around Welby Way. Eight hundred students attend the school. The morning drop-off and afternoon pickup is very hectic time around the school. Welby Way is in a residential community in West Hills. Karen Perry, a parent and teacher at Welby Way Elementary School, started a traffic safety program with students and parents volunteers in September 2002. The program started with two loading areas and two parents and four student volunteers. Program grew quickly, and as of this date, it has 80 students and parent volunteers, four gates, and a volunteer crossing guard. The purpose of the program is to direct traffic in the loading and unloading during drop-off and pickup times, and to ensure the safety of the students and convenience of the parents as they're commuting in the area. Fourth and fifth grade students are allowed to volunteer under adult supervision, and there are also valets. When a parent stops at the curb, they open the door as the valet. I don't think you get tips for that, do you? You don't get tips for that? But you're getting recognized today to make it safe around Welby Way Elementary School. So congratulations to all of you, Z Team members, at the Traffic Safety Program at Welby Way Elementary School. And I forgot how those shirts came about. I think it was a man by the name of who? David Awada, David Awada. I thought that was David Awada who came up with that wonderful idea. Karen, congratulations to you, congratulations to the students. And also, you're going to spend the day here at City Hall with lunch and a tour of the facilities, the Bradley Tower, etc. So Karen, the microphone is yours.
Thank you again, Councilwoman Zine, for honoring our students and giving them recognition, because that really is what makes them feel so good about themselves, doing something for the community and getting that recognition. We couldn't, I couldn't do it without them. They have made the traffic problem go away basically at the school. It's been wonderful, and I have to recognize my parents that helped me. And here today are Guadalupe Parsekian and Lois Siwada. And Lois Siwada has really been very helpful. I couldn't do it without her. She has helped me coordinate this program this year. So I give it all to my parents and my wonderful students who helped me out. Thank you. You guys are wonderful. And thank you, Councilwoman Zine, again.
You're welcome. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Congratulations to the students. We have one more presentation, members, so at this time, I would like to recognize Councilmember Tom Labange.
Good morning, members. And it is a wonderful last couple of years in Los Angeles, because there's a very special addition to our community that has come. And I'm sorry, Mr. Garcetti is not here, because they landed on Sunset Boulevard at the crossroads of the world. Please welcome contest winners, if I could say that, and I'll explain that in a few moments, from a wonderful program that Taschen Publishing Company, that world-famous publishing company of the great books that articulate the art of the world, has had this special contest, and they've invited the winners from all over the world, believe it or not, to come here to Los Angeles. And I'm going to ask Laura Howard to tell us a little in-depth about the program, and then I'm going to introduce you a great Angelino who has always kept California crazy. That's one of his books that he published. But let's welcome Laura Howard right now to tell us a little about what we're going to hear in a moment.
Hello, everybody. I'm Laura Howard. I do public relations with Taschen. And we are hosting this past year a contest called Find Falpez. And Falpez is one of our editors, actually, one editor right here from Los Angeles, who we take pictures of him and we put him in select books that we publish throughout the year. So then we have our readers try to find Falpez, and when they do find him, they notify us, whether it be email, postcards, that sort of thing. And then we've taken thousands of correct entries over the year and selected winners. And we've come up with six global winners from around the world that have joined us here in L.A. for Falpez Fest 2004, and we're very happy to be here and present them an award.
Well, you're going to get that award, Laura. Thank you for that explanation. But that contest, since if you need a translation, it's like, where's Waldo? It's, where's Falpez? But the real Falpez is right here. Did I say that correctly? Is Jim Hyman's. Give Jim a big hand, because he's the guy everybody found that got him to Los Angeles, the second-generation Angelino who went to St. Monica's?
St. Bernards.
St. Bernards, out in Westchester, right by the airport, right there. Jim, tell us a little about it.
Yeah, well, this is actually kind of an odd contest, that somehow I was made the central figure of. But my position with Taschen as executive editor, and I was chosen because of my knowledge of Los Angeles. I published about three or four books on Los Angeles, one called Sins of the City, The Real Los Angeles Noir, which kind of took an approach of exposing some of our more interesting aspects of City Hall and the police department and so on, and some of the more interesting cases, like the Black Dahlia and so on. So it's, I do a lot of historical research on Los Angeles. I've also published two different volumes... I've also published two different volumes on, called California Crazy, that looks at Los Angeles' oddball architecture, like The Tale of the Pup and The Brown Derby and so on. Anyway, they found me, I'm here, and thank you for welcoming us.
And since they found Jim and they're here, let me please welcome all the way Bridget Bartels from the Netherlands is here with us, Margarita Burgel is from Germany, Roth Burgel, relation, is from Germany, Louis, I want to say it correctly, Chikoli from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, where the Eagles should be playing Saturday, but they didn't have the offense to beat the Panthers, but we welcome you. And Nicole Murray comes all the way from South Africa, and Murray Rosenfeld cannot join us this morning, she came all the way from Israel. Timo Sali from Finland, welcome. And I want to say, Sidisa Spahn from the Netherlands, and Ludu Vaakuren from Belgium. Please welcome them all to Los Angeles. So, Madam President, with the power vested in me, as you delegated to me as a member of City Council of the Fourth District, City of Los Angeles, on behalf of all the colleagues of this great City Council, in the John F. Rall Chambers of City Hall, we officially welcome you all to the City of Angels because you've found Jim Hyman. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Labange. All right, members, we had four items that were called special, so let's now get back to the agenda and deal with the items called special.
Item three was called special by Councilmember Labange.
All right, Mr. Labange, would you like us to take up item three? All right, let me recognize Mr. Labange, item number three.
I'm going to ask Wendy Schwartz from our Department of Disability, AIDS Coordination Office, to give us a brief report on this important, of this action on the issue that we all are so concerned about, the fight against AIDS, the fight for AIDS funding, the fight to do things right.
Hello, council members. AIDS prevention efforts here in Los Angeles and around the world really rely very heavily on findings from research into risk-taking behaviors, including sexual behavior and substance use. And the National Institutes of Health, otherwise known as NIH, is the largest source of public funding for medical research in the world. And if this institution is not allowed the freedom to fund scientifically valid research projects in these sometimes controversial areas, there could be significant negative effects on our fight against AIDS and on public health in general. Therefore, we think it is important that the city of Los Angeles once again show its leadership in this issue by supporting an NIH funding system in which grants proposals are evaluated based on scientific merit and public health importance, free from political or ideological interference. I can take any questions?
No. I appreciate your report on that. Everything should be based on science, not politics, when it deals in this particular area here, and this action by the council will strengthen that as we move forward. So, members, I call for an "I" vote, and I appreciate all the work of the Office of AIDS Coordination and our efforts to join together and fight it, and not just in this country, but around the world, which is plaguing so many people in our world, but especially here in our own world of Southern California and Los Angeles. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Let's now call the roll on item four. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Labange.
And finally, Madam President, could I just have a salute? The Little Red Schoolhouse came all the way from Highland Avenue in Hollywood. Please stand up, children, and be welcomed by the Los Angeles City Council. The Little Red Schoolhouse is over three-quarter of a century home of Hollywood and a very great place. We welcome the Little Red Schoolhouse, second graders, right? Good job. Thank you very much.
Welcome, welcome to our city. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Item six was called special by Councilmember Villarosa.
Mr. Villarosa? Councilmember Villarosa. We are on item six. Let me indicate that the public hearing has been held on this item, but we do have five speaker cards that were submitted. It would take a motion from a member of the council to reopen the hearing. Mr. Villarosa.
Yes, members, I have technical amendments that I believe we passed around that have been approved by the city attorney on this matter. They're minor changes suggested by the city attorney. And essentially, what this motion does is reaffirm our legislative support at the state level for prevailing wage laws in this state. I was the author of prevailing wage in Sacramento when I was in the legislature, and I authored prevailing wage because I believed then and believe now that we need the best talent that we could have on our public projects, that we need to make sure that we have that best talent. And most, most often, that best talent is talent that is working with unions. Prevailing wage ensures that people can't get around that by not paying a rate that has been determined as the prevailing wage. In addition to that, this measure also indicates that the city will not support a lawsuit filed on behalf of the city of Long Beach where they attempted to obviate, go around the prevailing wage laws. They lost that suit. It's on appeal, and this measure would indicate that the city of Los Angeles does not intend to participate. I urge a vote.
Thank you. Mr. Villarosa, I don't know that we've seen the technical amendments circulated. Could you please tell us verbally what they are?
I can have the city attorney do that.
All right.
And they have been circulated, I've been told.
There's, it may have been given to the CLA. I don't think anything is-
The clerk's office has not received a copy yet.
No, nor has, nor has the president. Mr.-
Good morning, Madam President. Pete Echeverria from the city attorney's office. The only change to the resolution that was made after committee consideration was the addition of the provision that Councilmember Villarosa referred to, which is that the city will not participate in the litigation of the Long Beach case. That's the only change that was made from the committee action.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. We've had that submitted to us as clarified. Are there any questions, anyone wanting to speak? If not, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved, and let's send that forthwith to the mayor. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. Can I just have a forthwith on item number nine, please?
There will be forthwith on item nine. Mr. Clerk?
Item seven was called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Councilmember Weiss.
Hello, I'm over here. I'm going to be very brief. This is, this is a very small bit of good news that we're passing here that will finally give us the ability to spend some money and get about $12 million in federal money on homeland security-related funding. It's a small bit of good news, but there is really no excuse for this administration's continued failure to ensure that we're not doing one of these a month, or one of these every couple of weeks, because the city of L.A., just like the other big cities in this country, continues to incur exorbitant homeland security-related costs with pennies on the dollar in return from Washington. These are good pennies. We are finally going to be able to buy the Raytheon First Responder Vehicles, the interoperable communication patch-through vehicles that were celebrated at a press conference last summer. So it's, it's about time, it's two and a half years overdue, and I move it.
Councilmember Hahn?
Thank you. And I too stand in support of this request by the mayor's office that we accept this grant of $12 million. However, when you read the fine print of this grant, we have to share part of this with the county of Los Angeles. And the other thing that makes this problematic is that it is only allowed to be used as reimbursements for things the city frontloads, which we have done. This city, I must say, I'm very proud of, no matter what fiscal crisis we find ourselves in, we've been very good about stepping up into the plate, both at the port of Los Angeles and at the airport, City Hall. We've really put the money up front to make sure that our residents are secure in the city of Los Angeles. The other part of this is the mayor is asking the grantor, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, if we might be able to amend the terms of this, that we could actually draw down from this grant funds to be used to pay for security issues that we see fit, as opposed to just reimbursing front-loaded purchases. I think that makes sense. Again, we don't know what is going to be in the future, we're not sure, but so far, we have a great track record of putting our money where our mouth is in this city and paying for the needed security measures that we feel will safeguard our city. I must say, I'm glad about $700,000 of this grant will go towards the Harbor Department for the same kinds of things, reimbursement of funds that have been expended to secure the port. And I don't miss an opportunity to say loud and clear that, in my opinion, the port of Los Angeles is still very vulnerable. It still has not been on the radar screen for homeland security like our airports. And a new report recently issued by the FBI says that is still vulnerable. I represent people who live close to the port. I represent dock workers who are on those docks, day in and day out. And I would still like to send a message loud and clear that, in my opinion, federal government has a right, has a constitutional right to protect the nation, to provide for the common defense. That's their job, but we're happy to partner with them. But this is a first step. It is good news, but in my opinion, it is the tip of the iceberg. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. This matter is now before us to accept the $12 million grant. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That matter is approved. We will also send that forthwith to the mayor. Thank you. What remains on the desk, Mr. Clerk?
Special one has been introduced by Councilmember Reyes, second advice Councilmember Cardenas, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. I recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Los Angeles Police Department has notified Council District One that evidence leads have increased recently in this investigation, and now are requesting the council to reinstitute the reward motion in an effort to induce witnesses to come forward to solve the case involving the death of Renero Ramirez. Pursuant to the government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may then consider the substantive motion.
Is there any discussion on the findings for the matter? Seeing no one willing, wishing to speak on the findings, let's open the roll on making the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Let me recognize Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I want to thank you for your support. Renero Ramirez, fifteen-year-old young man, was shot to death last August. The detectives, the LAPD, and Rampart have been working diligently, following all leads. They finally came to us after they were, have exhausted all paths of any kind of support, and let us know that they needed this action to put together the kind of results that they feel can get them closer identifying the shooters. We were told by the CLA that it had expired, so I want to thank you for your support, for sending a loud message to the communities of Pico Union and Westlake that this council and this city does care. The mom was with us at the press conference yesterday. Obviously, she's very concerned and devastated by her loss, and this gesture, this effort on our part will demonstrate to her and the community that we do care, and we do want to find these perpetrators. And every day those killers are out in the street, it's one more day that lies our threat in our community. So, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we have the motion, special one, before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Clerk, anything else on the desk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred?
The desk is clear, Madam President.
The desk is clear. Are there any announcements, members? Seeing no announcements, are there any tributes for adjournment?
I just want to, I just want to congratulate the chair on a world-record Friday performance.
Well, I want to thank the members of the council who did get here on time, limit the resolutions to the presentations today. Good job. Again, any, any motions for adjournment? Seeing none? Do you have motions for adjournment, Mr. Zine? You do have an adjournment motion. All right. Would everyone please stand for adjournment motions? Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Madam President. This is from our Sergeant-at-Arms, Officer Ron Curry. His mom passed away last night. Mrs. Ernie May Hill passed away January 29th, 10:30 p.m. Mrs. Hill passed away after a short illness at West Hills Hospital. She leaves behind two sons, Ron Curry, our Sergeant-at-Arms, and Robert Hill; two daughters, Rosalyn Adams and Mary Louise Hill; six grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. She will be missed by all. May, Ernie May Hill, rest in peace.
We will have all members on that. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm reminded by our good friend Pete Echeverria that the newspaper reported yesterday that one of the absolute giants of the federal courthouse across the street, the Honorable Harry Hupp, passed away this week. He was an extraordinary man. Anybody who ever appeared in front of him knew they were being treated with the absolute utmost dignity and respect, and I don't know of anybody across the street whose rulings received a greater deal of deference and respect from the judges across the street, from the judges of the Ninth Circuit, and from lawyers who appeared in front of them. He, as the newspaper reported in his obituary, made some very courageous and historic rulings when he was on the Superior Court involving civil rights issues and the LAPD, which helped change the LAPD in the city for the better. And he went on to even greater acclaim as a federal judge. He will truly be missed in this city and in this country.
If I can just add on that, Mr. Weiss, I think his most pronounced, famous case was the Sundance case, Robert Sundance, where, seeing Mr. Zine smiling, it made a very, very big difference in Los Angeles Police Department, who, as we know, whether it was on Skid Row or in some of the homeless communities where we had people who were arrested for seriously just being sick with alcoholism, before they used to be arrested, thrown in jail. And for his famous ruling for Sundance, that no longer was tolerated. They, those people who were seen in that condition were given treatment, taken to hospitals, and could no longer be just arrested for being on the street and having, being a victim of that very serious illness. The Sundance case was historic. Any other tributes? Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to invite my colleagues, Councilmember Garcetti and Councilmember Villarosa, on this adjournment tribute. This is for Esther Bentley, who was a longtime resident of Glassell Park and active with the Glassell Park Improvement Association. She served as area representative for many years. She's also a member of the Northeast Democratic Club, was the recipient of the prestigious Don Head Award in 2002. In February 2001, Esther received the Lumen Christie Award from the ministry with lesbian and gay Catholics of the Archdiocese of Los Angeles, an award given to someone who has exemplified a Christian life from cradle to grave, caring and sharing it with everyone. Esther helped organize the gay and lesbian outreach at Saint Dominique's Church in Eagle Rock. In addition, Esther was a big supporter of the Gay and Lesbian Center, the Uptown Gay Lesbian Alliance, and the Coalition of Older Lesbians. She'll be sorely missed by her many friends who have looked up to her as their mentor. Memorial Mass celebrating Esther's life will be held on February 14th at Saint Dominique's Church in Eagle Rock at 9:30 a.m., followed by a reception in the parish hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
I stepped out of the room for a moment, but in following your remarks about Judge Hupp, I would think we all, members, should adjourn in his memory. I believe it was Wednesday when I was coming back to City Hall, the federal flags were at half-mast, and I wondered who in the federal community had passed, but Judge Hupp had passed. Members, I'd like to ask that we additionally adjourn in memory of Tasker Edmondson, who was the father of Joe Edmondson. Tasker was born in Los Angeles. He was an avid outdoorsman, whose interest in conservation movement made him one of the founders and one of the first treasurers of the Southern California Chapter, Nature Conservancy. Uh... Nature Conservancy. His greatest accomplishments with the Conservancy was the establishment of the Edwin C. Jaggar Nature Sanctuary near Desert Center Drive. The entire Edmondson family also became involved with open space issues, with conservation and its work. He truly, if we all know Joe, how much a father inspires a son, that Tasker, who lived into his 90s, truly inspired a great son in Joe. So I'd ask that all of us adjourn in memory of Tasker Edmondson, the father of Joe, his son. And I ask that we do that today.
It will be all members on that one, as well as on Judge Hupp. Yes, Mr. Reyes?
Yes, Madam President. I just wanted to add that Joe's role and inspiration of his father has been so tremendous, son of a conservancy that took the Belmont Project to another level, to fruition. Their investment in the park barriers of the city have been unparalleled, almost historical times that we're going through. So with a heartfelt condolences, I'd like to be part of that tribute.
Thank you. Mr. Labange, do you have another?
And finally, members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Helmut Newton, who was a very famous photographer. He lived to be 83 years old. Tragically, he had a automobile accident last week while leaving the Chateau Mont Monde. He is survived by his wife, June. He lived in Los Angeles in the winter months. He lived to be 83. And certainly was an impact in how he photographed people and how he photographed models and how he would take light and use the light to capture the drama on film for still photography. I ask we adjourn in memory of Helmut Newton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. I would like to ask the council to adjourn in the memory of Timothy Ling, a Palisadesian resident who died suddenly Wednesday after an ice hockey workout in El Segundo at the age of 46. Tim Ling was the president and chief operating officer of Unical and also an active member of the Los Angeles Philharmonic. He actually was born in Philadelphia, where he got a hockey scholarship to go to a school to play hockey in high school. And it was his lifelong passion, along with his passion for music. He was a pianist, a singer, and a cellist who loved music so much that he knew all of the performers personally who performed with the LA Philharmonic. And he would leave those performances just absolutely glowing, according to Deborah Borda, who's the president of the LA Philharmonic. He was also a gifted strategic thinker and helped them and had a real impact in terms of some of their planning and financing. He spent six years at El Segundo-based, at this El Segundo-based oil company, serving initially as his chief financial officer, then as executive vice president for North America, and finally as the number-two executive and member of the board of directors. He had earned an MBA in, from Stanford in 1989, helped create a small oil company, then later became a consultant at McKinsey &amp; Company, and actually co-wrote, was author of, a co-writer of a management book called Real Change Leaders, before leaving that company to go to Unical. He was a mentor to children, helped work with Boy Scouts, coached his eldest son's ice hockey, and was very active in the Young Presidents' Organization. He is survived by his wife. And in addition, he's got three children, Hudson, seven, Tommy, four, and Peter, two, as well as his parents, Gilbert and Shirley Ling of Marion, Pennsylvania, his sister, Eva Monahan of Wynwood, and his brother, Dr. Mark Ling of Atlanta. The family has asked that in lieu of flowers, donations be made to the Tim Ling Memorial Fund at St. Matthew's Episcopal Church in Pacific Palisades, or to the Tim Ling Scholarship Fund, care of the Los Angeles Philharmonic. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Madam Clerk. Council is adjourned. Again, thank you for prompt attendance.